I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Just a couple of little things I want to go over before we start the meeting. Last meeting, I elected to introduce our new building inspector, Bob Brady. So I want to do that tonight. Bob, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
So just want to, again, I apologize for not doing it last meeting. You were at the last meeting in person. Just want to welcome you aboard. And I don't think you will be bored with the work that we have been doing. I had a couple of interactions with you so far. I've been very impressed, so looking forward to working with you.
Thanks, and I look forward to working with all you too.
And then the other thing, Susan Boyle and her husband have sold their house in Tuxedo. And they have built a house in North Carolina. So she will be having her primary residence in North Carolina. So she will be leaving us after tonight. So I'd just like to thank you for your service. You've had very valued input for us, a very professional attitude at all times. So if I can speak for the board and the rest of your town, we wish you and your husband all the best. And you brought on the.
Right, thank you, Susan.
The next thing I just want to mention, I don't want to make any decisions. Our November meeting, it'll be here before we know it, is the same day as election day. So to me, it doesn't seem like it's the best day to have a meeting. This room is used for voting machines. They're set up Monday before. They're here probably till Wednesday or Thursday. So we don't have to make any decisions tonight. I don't even want to discuss it tonight, but I want to ask everybody on the board, the consultants, to check your calendars and see what might work either the week before or the week after in November. And we can talk about it in September and hopefully pin down the dates to let everybody know what the data that means. Question for you, Kelly. If I start with a public hearing on Kingdom Hall, can we then go to the regular meeting part of Kingdom Hall rather than jumping back and forth?
Yes.
So why don't we do that? So motion to open the public hearing for Kingdom Hall to site plan and special permit review. Have a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
So I'd ask somebody from Kingdom Hall to give us a brief summary of the project in case there's anybody here who would like to ask questions. We'll get into the consultant's report or comments and your concerns after the public hearing.
Okay. So just briefly, proposing a new Kingdom Hall job witness. And what's being proposed is a single-story, 5,317 square foot structure. It has seating for approximately 100 and, forget the number, it was 132 on this one? Then there are some breakout rooms. There are kitchen facilities, no other events at this building. The project site is off of Starlington Road, which is accessed off of Sterling Mine Road. And that's about it, really.
Is there anybody here from the public who has a question about Kingdom Hall? Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Favor? Now we'll go into the review of the site plan. You want to make a presentation to start that off?
Sure. So where we left off the last time, at the last meeting, we did go through the full environmental assessment form. And at that conclusion of that, the board did issue a negative declaration on the project. Items that were discussed in that, conditions on that included a review of traffic. There was always concern about traffic. And what was identified is that our traffic shows there's not a major impact from this project on the intersections in the area. There is another project, the audiovisual project, that is just down the road from here. That project has some mitigation that it will be doing that will help the project actually. There's site clearing that was done for that project. And that project also has a requirement that the traffic light at the intersection be evaluated after they get to a certain number of units on that site. There is a little bit of additional clearing that has to happen. Right now, the intersection meets stopping site distance for traffic. But for an intersection requirement, there's a little extra clearing that has been agreed to that will take place. The other thing that was requested was a review of topography on the site. The site has, is, I'm going to flip this over just to show this. There was a request that an analysis be done of any slopes 15% or greater. At that meeting, we had identified that we were looking to build on areas that did not have 15%. When we ran the computer model, the only thing that we didn't take into account is the fact that the old Iris Lane runs through here and the side slopes of that cut from that road do exceed 15%. But if you look at our grading plan, the intent is to fill that cut back in again. So we feel that that's a pretty minor impact. And one of our requests is that the board consider that we allow any small impacts like that be reviewed by the town engineer to make sure that we don't have any environmental impact. There was a discussion at that meeting about tree clearing. We did identify that there are additional trees that will be cleared on the site. But we're also working hard to try to keep that to a minimum. We're keeping the woods around the perimeter of the site as mostly as intact as we can. There is a large wooded area that separates us from the closest residential subdivision that's on the same side of Sterling Mine Road as us. And then to the north, there's additional screening between us and Sterling Mine Road. We did do a landscape plan that included additional 71 trees that will be planted. And as part of the review, the town planner has reviewed that and looked at that landscaping and said that the screening component of that does meet the requirements for the town code. We are also in the process of getting a well developed for the property. One of the things that delayed us from getting that well was we have one tree that we had to remove in order to do that. We did go back to New York State DEC. We did a screening of that tree on site. They got clearance from the DEC and we're proceeding with getting that well developed. And we would ask that, you know, that well be considered as a condition maybe of the approval from the board. Other than that, we do have some engineering and planning comments that we've received as of last week. We'll be working with both consultants from the town to address their comments. Largely, it's things like making sure that the septic system is sized properly. Sean has asked us to include a dosing component to the septic system, which is fine. We did that for our Newberg facility. Obviously, the well will become part of that. There are some stormwater considerations. Sean has asked us to look and see if we want to add some additional catch spaces on the property to try to pick up some of the drainage coming across the parking lot to minimize some of the sheet drainage that he feels we might want to look at. So we'll do that with him. There's also a pylon sign that was proposed. The pylon sign that was shown on the plan is JWCS's standard sign. The sign face was shown as a five by eight. It's a little bit bigger than what the town will allow. So a three and a half by seven is what we're most likely to wind up with. That does meet the requirement. And then Sean also asked us to make sure that that sign is not within the site triangle of the intersection of the driveway to Starlington Road. Starlington Road is a private road. It's not a town road. But still, you want to make sure you have the same, meet the same requirements. Other than that, I think we've addressed most of the other comments on revised drawings that will be coming out for, you know, the consultant's review, including the density requirements and percentage of cover and things like that. And I guess one of the biggest things that I forgot to mention is that this project did require a town board action on the zoning, and that did take place. And so we're now R2 zoning.
Thank you, John. Why don't we go to the consulting reports? And let's initially focus on the areas of concern. So Valerie, you want to, you know?
Yeah, so I think a lot of my mental was sort of identifying additional, like, in terms of the site plans, just making sure that they submit documentation, meaning the conditions. So that's where we raised the issue of steep slopes. But one of the things I just wanted to kind of raise with the landscaping and tree removal, and this is just something I just want to have a discussion with the board about. Just in general, you know, your zoning is a little bit silent in terms of, like, tree removal. There is a lot of robust, you know, language in terms of landscaping. And I think more and more, as you see these projects coming forward, you know, there's been a lot of, like, tree removal, you know, in terms of, you know, projects that come before this board. And especially since I've been working with the board over the last number of years. And it's something that you might want to start looking at in terms of landscaping plans that really try and require, like, more robust tree replacement. Because as time goes on, your character of the area, you might find starting to change, especially if you have a lot of tree removal and not a side tree.
I believe, Valerie, that you recommended.
Well, I was just suggesting, you know, taking a look at, like, maybe a 50%. You know, I had no idea how, what would be diameter loss of the trees that were possibly coming down. But clearly, there's some large trees that are going to be coming down as a result of this project, which the, you know, that was the additional information received today from the applicant. So it's something that the board might want to consider in terms of what kind of, you know, landscape and tree replacement you're providing and, you know, and how the overall character will look. Especially when you look at the site plan and what they're proposing, it doesn't seem as robust as what could potentially be on that.
And I believe you, the landscaping plan that you submitted includes 71 new trees.
Correct, it includes 71 new trees.
So I would be willing to accept that. But I need to get, I want to get the input of the board on that new number. So while that's fresh in our minds, Susan, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I actually have a question for you, Valerie. Is there a standard in terms of replacement? Because I know in the document it says, you know, we ask for 2.4 for every one taken down. But is there a standard that we can follow?
So in a lot of communities that I work in that actually have tree, like, regulations on place, they usually do, a lot of them do require 50% DBH tree replacement.
Okay.
Definitely, the applicant has, you know, put forth that doing so would, you know, be a tremendous amount of, you know, tree replacement. But I think that just goes to highlight some of the, you know, large scale trees that are going to be removed.
Right.
Part of this project.
Okay. Bill?
Just to comment, we see larger trees replacing in inches are a lot more expensive than smaller trees, but they have much more, much quicker impact. So what I would be in favor of is a mix. Not having them, if they have to put 172 inches, I don't want all two inch trees, you know? Since there's substantial trees being taken down, maybe some percentage of the replacement can be above a caliper that makes them less than just saplings. More than just saplings.
Okay.
Think that'll help make the replacements look more like something sooner.
All right, thanks, Bill. Ned?
As far as the town goes, we have guidelines that we can go by?
Kelly?
I've heard of that. So I looked in your landscaping, the landscaping regulations and the zoning have landscaping guidelines in terms of what landscaping plans should look like, but not necessarily the replacement.
Okay, so we've got to work on that.
All right, with regard to what Susan was mentioning about the ratio. Because of that, so they got to replace 70 something trees, 100 something trees, that they do it in variable thicknesses. So, yeah. That's kind of.
Susan?
Good.
John?
I think that based on the fact that the surrounding area is still going to be a forested buffer, line of sight to residential, line of sight and stuff. So there's still going to be a lot of trees that are going to be original to that area. I've, my thought is that $277,000 is a bit absorbent for me for replacing trees. Okay? I'm more in favor of bringing it back the way it would naturally. Supposing it was a forest fire. It comes back as a meadow, small trees develop, it becomes a forest again. And being smaller plantings like wildflowers, grasses and stuff sprayed, you know, power sprayed on, that's going to hold the soil better to me as far as I'm concerned. It holds it better on a hill and it quickly starts to rejuvenate so we don't look like a barren field with big trees sticking up. I do think we should put trees in there. There's no doubt about it. I think that we need to be responsible as to the quantity and the size of those and work with you guys on a realistic plan as to what you want to do. I, you know, I just can't perceive the size and quantity of trees that we were talking about. I'm more of the meadow looking guy.
The trouble with that is you have different habitat for the meadows than you do for the trees.
But I'm not saying leave it as a meadow. I'm saying if you power seed with wildflowers and grasses to begin with and put the trees, it's going to hold the soil in place between these trees while they become mature and then overgrow the meadow. Because if you watch the way of a natural forest, you start with a pond.
Right.
Pond then becomes marsh grasses, becomes a field with flowers, small trees, bigger trees, and that's how a forest grows. So I'm trying to look at that same thing instead of just jump starting through the huge trees where it's, you know, we need to be responsible how we do it. But I prefer the meadow to tree thing.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yeah, good.
So while we're on this topic, is there a little bit of wiggle room? I'm willing to go with the 71, but could we do 10 to 15, a little bit bigger?
So that's a issue for Mike.
Is that possible, based upon the board's request comments?
I think, John, as a board, what we had talked about, right, John, is if you notice the little island somebody out there?
Right, in the parking lot.
In the parking lot. We had talked about adding a few more trees there, actually going upper number two.
So that would add, that would add eight more trees if we add to the islands. You know, the area that we're talking about, have the meadow mix would be the area down east of the Stormwater. There's an area that's surrounded by woodland. And the whole idea is that we don't want to maintain it. We want to naturalize it and let it go back to succession growth. So we do feel that that will, you know, very quickly, actually, within a few years, start to have sprout some street growth in it. See all the time on construction sites that sit fallow for a few years. All of a sudden, you've got stuff growing everywhere. So we don't anticipate that this will, you know, we believe we'll be able to prevent erosion and other things. The tough thing is, is that, you know, there really isn't, really isn't a guideline in the town standard to go by. So we're hoping that what we're showing, which is fairly substantial amount of landscaping that we're doing. We already had, we had something that board would want to.
While you mentioned the meadow, we had a controversy about a meadow in another application. And when it was presented to us, obviously, it was not existing at that point. But we saw photographs of a developed meadow. And I certainly didn't understand what a developed meadow was. And then it took a couple of years to develop. And as it turned out, this meadow was very unsightly. Our supervisor got many calls complaining about this. Deborah got many calls complaining about this. So we eventually compromised and had the meadow cut down, at least for now. That was a very visible location. I don't think this is.
Yeah, I was going to say, this one, you know, you're down slope, you're wood at either side. You've got a private road with very little traffic on it. Won't really see it in the Sterling Mine Road.
Is that the area that's open now?
No, the area that's open now is this area.
So that's a wooded area?
It's a wooded area.
So why does it need anything? Why can't, I mean, you're not going to cut the trees in there, are you?
Well, we had, part of this has to be cleared so that we can get our stormwater practices in.
Okay.
That's why that's being done.
Yeah, I would just question that if the meadow can be presentable, I'm sure that you would want it to be presentable.
Yeah.
Okay.
The goal is to have it look nice. We don't, you know, we don't want it to, it's not.
That's an aside, but.
But also, John, if you do a meadow without the trees, it can easily become a. If you have trees planted amongst the meadow, it's going to then develop more into that. It's going to control it a little bit. And depending on what you plant in said meadow, I mean, if you throw goldenrod on the ground, it's going to look terrible in about 10 minutes, but it can be.
We've used a meadow mix on other facilities and we've had success.
I'd like to see examples of what you would think.
We can provide.
Okay. While we're on the subject of trees, the tree clearing, and I guess Sean, you want to.
Well, before we move on to that, we still, I'm just trying to make changes. So we said 71 trees.
Plus eight.
Plus eight in the island. And where were we on the little bit bigger part? Or is that off the table? Just want to make sure I graphed something.
Yeah, so we're already proposing two and a half, three inch caliber trees, which are, you know, decent sized nursery style. You know, and then obviously, the evergreens are based on height as opposed to caliber. So we would hope that that would be sufficient. They were actually, you know, larger than, than, you know, a lot of ordinances required.
What's the approximate height of the evergreens?
The evergreens, we're looking at six to seven foot.
Okay, Kelly, got that?
Just seven feet for the evergreens, two and a half to three inch caliber for deciduous?
Deciduous trees, yeah. Ornamental tree for the, or tree root screen in that category.
Do you want to start off with the tree cutting issues?
Well, there is a, obviously, the Indiana vat is a concern in the area. When we went in to do our well, and we had a tree that we had to remove in order to get the well rig in, our biologist identified that the DEC does allow tree cutting outside of that window after you do a review with them. So you go and you look at the trees and you identify if they have the potential for habitat. And the DEC has also identified that the biggest threat to the vat is actually in their winter habernacle, which is their caves, where they get that white nose syndrome, I think you've heard about. So the DEC in their response letter said, if you want to take a couple of trees down, not a problem. Just make sure they're not suitable for habitat. And then they also left the department and said, and if you want to do other things, all you have to do is come back to us, tell us you'd like to do some additional clearing. Show us the documentation. And if you provide the right documentation, we'll allow you to do the clearing. So based on that, you know, we're not that far from November 1st. We do realize that. But, you know, if we manage to get through conditions on site plan approval, starting to prep the site before the winter, you know, is desirable. And so the applicant would like some lean and see on that to be able to at least go to the DEC and see if they would allow us to do clearing, you know, in October as opposed to November.
You haven't approached the DEC yet on that.
We would not approach them unless this board said that it was, that they were amenable to allowing us to do that.
And you have, already have documentation on one or two trees for the.
Just on the one, yes, I did share that with the.
Yeah, I appreciate it if you could send that to the building inspector.
I did not send it to the inspector. I did share it with Sean. Happy to discuss if you'd like, me too, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just on the clearing, I just, before we get into the bats, I just want to make sure I understand. So the initial plan came in with 21 trees we cleared on the site. The revised plan came in with an additional 63 or 62 to bring it up to 83 trees. In your court bumps today, you said there were 94. But I double checked on the plan and only 83 trees are graphically shown. Were additional trees added on the periphery or is it just the 94 is a typo? I would have to go back and count them again myself. I just had a staff person look at that to get that memo out today so that we can calculate that. It's definitely more than the 21 because the 21 was based on just a concept. And then once we got the perpulation test and we did this, the infiltration analysis, required a bigger stormwater practice. What I'm trying to avoid is some confusion in the field, right? You go out to cut trees and the code enforcement officials out there. Some trees are shown on the plan to be cleared, but then there might be additional trees that you have an idea to cut. I just, again, I just, whenever that plan comes in for Chairman's sake, it should be clear. I understand. I agree with your comment. Your comment was, please make sure that if you're going to do any, well, even before any clearing happens, you want to make sure that it's identified where it is, it's marked in the field and the inspector has that. Yes. And understands it. So that's fine. That's a condition that we're more happy to apply. In terms of the limitation on the back clearing, this is a DEC requirement. The only reason that I had recommended to Kelly that it be included in the resolution was because it was included in your expanded part three. I mean, the expanded part three actually said that you will place a note on the drawings, no claim between November 1 and March 31st. That note wasn't on the drawings. So rather than, you know, make a big deal of it, I just included as a condition, not thinking it was a big deal. If you're looking to do that, I would have a question for Kelly relative to speaker. But before we even get there, if the board is okay with that, and I don't have a reason not to be okay. Again, this is the DEC's requirement. And the applicant wants to go through some sort of approval with the DEC. I just wanted to be clear in terms of that you get an approval, this is what you get an approval for. You know, what was provided today was really just snippets of a conversation. I don't know what was provided to the DEC, you know? So we'd like to see the whole correspondence trailing the approval. That would be fun. And we would, we would share that if we decide to go that path anyway with you. You can even make that a condition.
Is it difficult to get that in your experience?
To be honest with you, they have Tuxedo Reserve here. I know that when they were clearing East Terrace a number of years ago, they had actually proposed a sonar study for bats. And I know I had somewhere some enforcement from DEC that says they no longer accept that. Now, but maybe they've changed position since then. But in my experience, no, I've never seen that.
Just so everybody understands, planning board, the town, no town agency can give you that permission. It has to.
It has to come from the DEC.
Yep.
Sean, did you, did you, I'm sorry, did you say they don't give the exception?
The last time somebody had asked for the exception that I'm familiar with is actually Tuxedo Reserve. They were clearing East Terrace a number of years ago before the pandemic and they ran out of time.
Okay.
And they wanted to do a sonar study and a field study and have a biologist come out. And I recall the DEC saying that was not acceptable at the time. Whether maybe they've changed the requirements or not, I don't know. It was a number of years ago.
Okay.
But I was very surprised that the DEC consented to that and consented to additional tree clearing within that region.
Yeah.
So provided the documentation comes from the DEC, I'm okay with that to start before November 1st. Susan, you have any other comments about this?
No, I guess my only question is, this is just one piece of the whole site plan. So if I'm not in agreement with this one piece, do I abstain? Do I say no?
No, well, you can. Anybody can abstain. You know, it's one fairly small piece.
Yeah, okay.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm okay. We still want a few bigger trees, but doesn't look like I'm going to get them. Ned?
All right, the other and the final point that is of concern is the slopes.
Sure, I can address that if you'd like, Mr. Chairman. So very similarly, so the applicant's part three said all slopes within the development zone are less than 15%. So I think this board essentially believed that the applicant had performed an analysis and was okay with that. The only thing that you had asked for would be if they showed those on the site plan, which was my recommendation, you didn't have a graphic to base that on. The applicant provided graphic today and there is, or there are slopes greater than 15% within the development. Now, there's no prohibition in your code that 15% is really just a.
Now, there's no prohibition in your code that fifteen percent is really just a delineation in your EAF. You know, that's the, the state, uh, where they say that you may or may not have an impact. I don't necessarily think the applicant's gonna have an impact, but, um, they have to do, um, geotechnical testing. Uh, that was one of the conditions. They indicated they would be doing additional geotechnical work. I would just say if the boards, uh, go into now permit that, again, hear from Kelly relative to Seeker. But from a technical standpoint, I think just, uh, like other applications you have, they can just have a recommendation from their geotechnical engineer how to deal with those soils, to make sure you're not increasing erosion in that area, and then as long as they follow those recommendations, I think it would be fine.
Okay.
I agree.
So no Seeker impact?
No, the way that Seeker was worded for this, uh, the way that Seeker was worded for this was that they needed to update that information. Um, so I think that by doing this, then when you consider it for Seekers, like Sean said, um, the net lot area calculation talked about the twenty-five percent. So you wanted the fifteen percent to be identified in slopes analysis. So I think it's handled the way that you suggested it should be.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the slope issue? Okay. Since there are a lot of conditions, do we really have to read them all? What do you think?
No, but can I go through a couple of provisions?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of, could throw out also.
So the first one would be on one B. And I didn't type that part up while we were talking, so I just wrote insert Sean's change. And that relates to the slopes that we just talked about. So I'll update that according to our conversation. One D, um, deals with the landscaping, so I just modified that to say comply with the memorandum of the town planner, date is March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and memorandum. And July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, to the satisfaction of the town planner, in connection with the satisfaction of this condition, the applicant shall be required to plant seventy-one trees to replace those that were removed as part of this project. The applicant will plant an additional eight trees in the islands in the parking lot. All evergreen trees being planted shall be between seven, six to seven feet in height. And all deciduous and ornamental trees being planted shall be between two and a half to three inches in caliber. Correct? So I get those numbers right?
That's correct.
And then I revised one F regarding the DEC. So that would now say, prior to signing the plans, the applicant shall obtain an incidental take permit from the New York State DEC as determined by, that is determined necessary by the agency and provide appropriate documentation to the building department. Any trees clearing permitted by this approval for the construction of this project shall be limited to the time between November first and March thirty-first so as to mitigate any adverse impacts on roosting northern long-eared bats unless the applicant obtains approval for any clearing activity outside of the clearing window from the DEC after the DEC reviews requested additional information to make sure no adverse impact to bats or rattlesnakes are anticipated. Then, so that I kinda, I merged those two conditions to deal with them once, uh, because if they get that, then. So then I removed what was condition six because I moved it up and.
Before you, before you get there, I have a question about two A. Two A is the hours of operation and so on. Talks about Monday through Friday, talks about Sunday and holidays.
Right.
It's not addressed Saturdays. And I'm agreeing, you can work on Saturdays, but it's not mentioned.
Oh.
So.
Who knows, Saturday. I'll change it to Monday through Saturday.
Right, and then there's one other provision of that that I'd like to throw out is on, um, number eight, condition number eight. Construction is permitted eight to, eight to eight on weekdays. And it's, the way it's written now, it's nine to eight on Saturdays. Couldn't we possibly just cut it off at five o'clock on Saturdays?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
By the way, that, that's how it's written, totally, I believe. So, you know, if it's something that the board thinks should be modified, that.
Yeah, I mean, people having get together Saturday and it's.
Yeah, I think we'd be absolutely fine.
In that case, I'll change it to five PM, but I'll move the code reference to the end of the paragraph. So that it doesn't look like the five PM is coming.
And, and this will be addressed later when we talk about the entrance layout, but, um, I wanna make it consistent that entrance for Kingdom Hall or the ARB facility, it's the same guidelines, uh, for each. So there's never any question, well, it's that project, the mission. So it'll be consistent, and we'll get to that once we get to it. There's really no change there of any consequence, but this makes it consistent.
And the last thing was, I had a gold eye talent in specific condition seven, where the lighting shall be, uh, motion detector slash timer regulated. Just wanted to make sure if you had a preference and that the applicant was okay with that.
So, but I would have to ask you how the existing facilities work. I know when we've looked at other facilities, it's usually stipulated that an hour after the last meeting, the lights are shut off, except for, you know, security lighting. I don't know that they do that on a timer per se. I think it's the last person that cleans the facility up, turns the light off an hour after everybody leaves.
If they remember.
The outside lights?
The exterior lights, yeah, the parking lot lights, yeah.
That's if they remember. So there probably should be something that would automatically default later. Listen, you have a meeting, everybody's sat in there, it's seven o'clock, and that main attention's still kind of bright out, and no one made the change to it. Probably should go off at eleven or ten or twelve or whatever.
I don't, that's just not a problem.
So what if I just put motion detector and/or timer, and then you do?
Yeah, that's fine. We'll make it work. Make it work. That's fine.
Yeah, that would just, it's better for you to.
Gives them a little flexibility there. That is all that I had for changes.
Oh, we got number six. We started to talk about six, condition six, which was also the bat.
The incidental take?
Yeah.
I moved that one up to one F. So that there.
Yeah, the other, so that's, that's coming out, okay.
Yeah, so I just put, I put six, got rid of it, and I just moved it up to F to combine it with any tree clearing.
Great, thank you.
So Valerie or Sean or Kelly, any other things, uh, you wanna bring up?
I didn't have anything further. Mr. Chairman, I'll send any of the board members have questions online at board.
Okay.
Me too.
Valerie, anybody on the board have any other questions?
Just one suggestion. On the tree calipers, the, uh, two and a half to three inches or two to, two and a half inches, could it be or greater? So they don't get punished for making a bigger tree.
In case anybody's wondering, for a place of worship, uh, architectural review board approval is not required. So that's why that has never come up here. So it's, it's not required for the House of worship. And just to throw in, I had an opportunity to visit a, uh, a virtually complete Kingdom Hall up in Newburgh on your invitation. And, uh, it's a very unobtrusive building. It looks like a professional office where dentists or doctors, attorneys would be in. Very attractive, um, doesn't stand out. Uh, neutral color palette, so it's, uh, it, it's a fine-looking building, and this is gonna be virtually similar to that. Okay, with that, I will.
I have one question.
Okay.
This is about the lighting that you're gonna have on the parking lot. There's a road, sterile line. I wanna make absolutely certain that that light doesn't blind any of the traffic.
Right, so one of the things that was requested of us, and this is what we submitted on to the town engineers for the battle. But we did do a point five point based on a fifteen-foot mounting height, which is the maximum height we can have. And there is zero all along facing out towards sterile line.
Okay.
It's a dark sky, uh, the light fixture itself is a four thousand KV, not the higher brighter, almost light ones. It's a, a neutral light, um, you know, and it's with, uh, the shielding to make sure that it stays on the side.
Right, just, just concentrate the light more on the property and bleed, bleed off into residential areas.
Right, there actually won't be bleed off past the property line out there, so it's, we, we get back to zero, that they get property.
Yeah, we made that mistake in here, and I don't wanna do it again. So, good.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for, uh, the special permit and site plan. For the draft, uh, resolution, Kelly, prepare a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I think you understand that before I can sign out off on the plans, you have to address all those.
All the conditions that could be addressed. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate your time.
Hey, the next, uh, next, the next item is the public hearing on the commons in Tuxedo Reserve. And it's only on the wetlands permit issue, correct, Kelly?
This is, no, the agenda is incorrect. So this is, uh, the, I'm sorry, the public hearing?
Yes.
I thought you meant the resolution. Oh, the hearing, yeah, it's for well.
The wetlands.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and board, staff, uh, fresh force from Zaren's Timbers, and here the applicants. Chuck, actually, to present the, uh, wetland plan to the public.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and board, for the record, my name is Chuck Etchard, Senior Associate of the Department of Land Management.
Maybe you wanna use this, so.
Thank you. This application is relative to the wetland impact that's been proposed as part of the Commons Development. The Commons Development is a revised site plan that this board reviewed and issued a conditional resolution of approval X months ago. Well, an impact that was represented on that plan is the same one that we're referring to tonight. So in your review of that amended site plan, we represented the well, and it's actually our buffer. I think your staff suggested that because of the planned changes, public hearing on the wetland issue was appropriate. So this is, this is really something that you, as the board, have seen before. Um, it's about the wellland that's located along the lower stretch of the commons and primarily where we put building one and the rest of the recreational facilities, which in the old plan, it was a parking. So no real changes in any of the wellland impacts, no increases, as we represented before, and, and what you looked at and approved. Uh, was a plan that had all the same limit of disturbance. Um, so I think this is about the public's interest in this application. Um, and I'll leave my presentation at that unless you would like more details.
No, I think that's probably enough for now, except for the public hearing part. Does anybody have any questions about this from the public? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. I move on to the consideration of the permitting.
I need a motion.
I mean, I, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
So you can go on.
I'm not su, I'm not sure there's much more to say. I mean, I, I, I guess, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate what I said, right? This was before this board, not that long ago. You did a very thorough analysis and review of the plan. It did change quite a bit from a, a unit type and general configuration. But relative to the limit of disturbance, the wetland impacts, the buffer impacts, as I presented on the previous presentation for site plan approval, has not changed. This is, and has been consistent in this area for, for multiple versions of the site plan for this area.
And I believe, Kelly, um, to your point, the resolution is for site plan, ARB, and the wetlands permit.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, they had some minor amendments, that's why it's all being incorporated into this resolution.
And there were no new submissions, so I, Kelly or Sean or Valerie have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I just wanna add is, I, I don't think that, uh, I think the reason they're here to not have the public hearing, uh, nothing has changed. I, I agree with the applicant. I, I think it's that the original public hearing did not include the wetlands component, which is a requirement of your code. So in order for you have to have that public hearing.
And we never had any comments from outside correspondents who sent in emails, nothing?
No, but that is a great lead-in to page five of my resolution where I had blanks for the Orange County two thirty-nine report. You did receive that, and there, they did have one comment, and they just recommended that the applicant use green building materials and water sands fixtures. So that part of the resolution will be updated to note that that is there. But specifically on the wetlands, no, you didn't receive it.
We have to review the waivers tonight, right?
Yes, if you review the waivers, um, if you have any specific questions, otherwise just make sure that you agree with what is in there before you would ask any.
Wanna briefly go over those?
Sure. So the first one is for the roof pitch on the events building. Um, so the architectural and landscape design guidelines require a primary roof structure and side gable roofs within the commons to have minimum roof pitch of nine on twelve. And the applicant is proposing a roof pitch for the events building of six on twelve. So, uh, Ashley from AKRF provided some forest comments and also referred to the waiver provisions that are on page twenty-five of those. So you have to see if you're okay with the roof pitch there. And then the next one had to do with, this is more for Valerie, but they replaced some of the landscaping. As they have on each one, they have, um, recommended planting. They had several additional recommended, uh, replacement plantings. There were seven of them. And I've listed them there. Um, you do have permission to waive those as well with the above-listed grounds, justifying the waivers. And then I listed off your freshwater wetlands findings, which are consistent with your code provisions.
Do you wanna highlight any of the specific conditions?
No, I didn't really have any revisions to those. I think a lot of them are consistent with your prior Tuxedo Reserve resolutions. Uh, I think there was one additional, number fifteen had to do with the freshwater wetland permit. So, uh, number fourteen, I'm sorry. So those both dealt with the freshwater wetland permit requirements from your code in chapter fifty-five.
I don't have anything on the specific conditions, um.
Good on us, thank you.
Bill?
No.
John?
Nope.
So by adopting the resolution, then you'll be adopting the justification for the waivers as well.
And again, it's for the site plan, ARB.
And freshwater wetlands.
So I'll make a motion to that effect to approve the draft, uh, resolution of conditional approval. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. More comments, sir? The look ahead schedule, which I know is always important.
Yeah.
So we do not anticipate making any submissions for September or October. Um, there's a chanceful that we'll be ready for November to begin a new section portion of the project. Um, so whatever board decides with respect to election night, we'll, we'll accommodate and obviously be here, um, whatever day.
I, I doubt it'll be on a Wednesday. Uh, one other thing, what about, I know you've submitted specific plans for building permits for, uh, one area. Does the building department or Bob, uh, know your expectations, your requirements for that?
Yeah, Adam, uh, has been meeting regularly with, with Bob, uh, and they're doing a great job working through plan provisions.
Well, they sat down and they went through the plans together. Adam hasn't done a formal submission. He's just waiting on the phone. I'll get those into the town, but it seems like they are very comfortable with the process that they're sending.
Okay. As long as we understand, or the building department understands at this point, you know, what you need, what your expectations. As long as we understand, or the building department understands at this point, you know, what you need, what your expectations.
Yeah, it sounds like we're on the same page, so. Enjoyed working with the new member of your team.
Okay, good. All right, we'll see you in November. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It was a pleasure to spar.
Things, better things come.
Waivers?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the staging area amended resolution for Watchtower. IRA, or anybody on your team want to make a?
Hi, Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you. I should probably use that microphone or.
Oh, yes.
Whatever you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Brian Ware with Watchtower. Evan Leslie had provided correspondence to your attention, July twenty-fifth, but he's unable to be here.
No problem.
So my privilege to be before the board. We could give you an update on our project, or we can proceed however you prefer, Chairman.
Or maybe a brief update on the project?
Yeah, we could kind of give everyone a no review. I know we've been here a few times. Let me get on the right side here. So obviously going back to, it was early twenty twenty-two, we did the realignment of Sterling Mine Road. Remember the original entrance for Sister Servants? And we had a dormant driveway, so we appreciate the board. We worked with Orange County DPW and the board to do this realignment. That was our initial step with the board. And as you see, we have a completed intersection with proper sightlines, a left-hand turn lane. So we feel this has been a real benefit to the community that we've amended. And I think the community is benefiting those who access the St. Joseph's Care Home or Sister Servants. So thank the board for allowing us to work through that process. So we've amended the resolution a couple of times to allow tree removal. So all the trees have been removed from the greater project, the audio video project. All the trees are off the site. We appreciate you extending the dates that have allowed us to do that, especially because this has been the only real access to the property for, you know, many years. And part of our requirement with the Ramapo Planning Board, and obviously, which was a desire on the part of Tuxedo, is to install an entrance in Ramapo. And I'll flip this around here, give you a idea on that. So this is zooming out. This is the Tuxedo corner with the seven acres right here, so this intersection work is complete. And if you, obviously you've seen our new temporary entrance, which is just past the other Eagle Valley Road that comes out. So we're working with a temporary entrance, but we do have a permit from the Rockland County Highway Department and the Drainage Agency to widen the road here and also install a turn lane. So what you see has been done here on the Tuxedo side. We have permits in place in order to affect this work. So coming up west, you'll have a left-hand turn lane, the road would be widened, similar to what's been done here. So that'll provide good access for the community during the construction project.
It's obviously not in our jurisdiction.
Right.
When do you think that will be done?
Well, we're hoping to implement it before the end of the season.
Okay.
Asphalt work in the right of way ends the middle of November. We're hoping to be able to get this portion done by that time, depending on if we can get some things finalized. So we appreciated the board. We know that was important to the board. We've got that done, and we're going to get it to the point where we're going to have good, safe through access for the community. Now, as far as coming back to Tuxedo here, let me get this other plan up here in a moment. So this is the approved site plan, back to this plan if I may, this is the approved site plan. So when this project is done, just to kind of refresh the board on what you'll see when it's finished, is you'll see a landscaped with proper approved plantings. You'll see this small structure right here, which is the incoming power. So this is a large primary switch for the incoming power to the complex. This has been installed, you might have seen that on the road. It's on a concrete pad. So we have trenched up this accessway. The duck bank, that's a buried duck bank to bring in our primary power and our telecommunications, which will run underground along this, along this road. It'll cross over the bridge and provide power and communication to the, to the facility. This duck bank will also supply power to the lighting. And brief security will have a nice wrought iron gate and some decorative fencing. So really, the only thing that you'll see when this project is done, when this, when this facility is nearly done, is just a nice residential paved entrance with a wrought iron gate only for private residential access. So again, I think that was the, one of the amendments to the resolution started with this realignment. So we appreciate the board getting us to this point with the project. Now, you've also approved our staging area. I'll bring up our staging plan, give you an idea where we're at with our staging. So as, as required, again, this is all a temporary, this is all temporary for the board. This is the approved plan that we'll eventually get to. This allows us what we need to do to support two things. One, it's the work that's being done right now. So that's actually pretty heavy work to bring in all this duck bank and all the grating and drainage. So we appreciate having construction access that we've had in order to do this work under a Tuxedo permit. So we've, we have some of the temporary staging modulars here, and we have put in our screening, our approved tree screening, to help block some of the sightlines from the community. And we just received a permit for the, the temporary tent that we're going to use to support the staff that are going to be working with the project. So again, we thank the board for allowing us to have the staging area and to have the access. Now, we've abided by the restrictions on the access. We're only using a centerance, and this has been a requirement we've worked with since early on, is only accessing this property with construction vehicles from nine AM to three PM. And we, only five trucks an hour. So we've made sure that that's clearly communicated to our, you know, staff, vendors, deliveries. We make sure, and we feel that we've abided by that pretty good. We haven't been aware of any concerns meeting that restriction, that condition. So that's not been a burden for us to work. That's, that's actually worked very well.
I haven't heard of any issues with regard to that either, so.
Okay.
We appreciate your compliance.
Yeah, so we do the nine to three, five trucks an hour, no left turns leaving the site, and no weekends and holidays, or no holidays, and I forget the exact restriction, but we've got it in writing there. No Sundays, holidays, I think it is.
Right.
So this access, as we know with our recent resolution, is expiring August thirtieth. So you've asked us to come before the board, so that was the purpose of the July memo from Evan Leslie, is the request for the board to consider extending us beyond that August thirtieth date. Now, I know we've come before the board a few times with, I think most recently, a six-month increment. So again, because of, because of, we feel that we've abided by those conditions without any incident. We can work with it. And also because of the need to have both of these entrances open for the project, we're asking if the board would consider allowing us to have continued access for the duration of the staging area, which is revocable, obviously, if we don't, if we don't meet some of those conditions due to, at the board's discretion. So that's, that's our request. If you don't mind coming before the board, we, you know, if you want updates, but we're also asking, since this is approved for the two years, we would, wondering if we could have the continued access for that two years under those restrictions.
That's the way that we've structured the resolution.
Okay, that would be great.
Run until August sixth of twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, two years. The other thing that I want to get the board's opinion on this, then the restoration would begin, I assume, after those two years. And I'd like to put some kind of timeframe around that so that we all know when it will be done, the restoration. So I'm throwing out sixty days from August sixth of twenty-six for the restoration to be complete. I'm willing to, you know, hear other opinions on that. But I would like that, as Kelly has incorporated sixty days in the draft. Your input on that.
I'm sure we can work with that, unless we have some comments from our.
Does it take a long time to deconstruct any of the stuff in the staging area? I don't, I don't know if that may be.
Well.
Sixty days, if it takes ninety days, I don't know.
Yeah, just, just to be transparent with the board, this is, this is a twenty-phase project, and the build-out will take three and a half years, three and a half to four years. So we've. By the time we start full site plan work, it's going to take.
Not quite now.
Yeah, we're, we're really close, yeah. So we kind of planned out the, the works on this to kind of fall in that three and a half to four-year period. The reason is, is if we put in all the finished paving, the railing, the wrought iron grate, all the finished lighting, we, we would still want to use this as a construction entrance, which is really our, our desire. So we had kind of planned on doing all that finish, the finished final touches to this project, to this part, toward the end of the project. We can certainly look at that if it's desirous of the board to have this done earlier. But we were just trying to not affect any of the finished landscaping and the, the final, the finer work.
Well, the other thing we put in the, in the resolution is that we will invite you back July of twenty-six, see where we are, and entertain a further extension if need be. That way, that way it would expire, you know, you'll be back in July and we'll see where we are.
We're very agreeable to that, yeah.
I mean, instead of bringing you in like every thirty days or every sixty days, two years.
Yeah.
I mean, you can come visit us if you want. You might not want to.
If you want an update.
But the sixty days from August of twenty-six, that doesn't quite line up.
I'm sure we can, we can work with that, yeah.
We especially murdered it, we had it on our schedule, but. And, Mr. Chairman, what do you mean by restoration?
According to its natural state, I know the duck bank installation has to stay. But other than that, you know, take every, the tents and the trailers away. And, you know, you planted a lot of the, the trees, they're nice trees.
Mr. Chairman, can I just jump in real quick?
Sure.
When you had said that, I had thought that you were implying that you wanted it to be consistent with the plan the board has already approved for that permanent entrance. Is that, is that more or less?
No, that's, that's a fair statement.
Okay.
Those items would be included, obviously, you know, trail removal and demobilization.
If not, I don't think there's a whole lot more. It's just, I had not heard that term before, this context, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, the way the resolution is written, right, it says restore to its natural condition or as approved on the final site plan. So initially, I was going to say natural condition, but I think we should probably keep or approved in the final site plan, like Sean's saying. But really what it does is, again, instead of you guys coming back every thirty to sixty days, the goal would be maybe check in with the board in two years and see where you are. And if it needs to be longer, certainly you can talk to the board then. And I just won't have to write one of these every sixty days.
We're very agreeable to that, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I mean, really, it's all about me here. Just kidding.
Then the one final thing, the way the draft resolution is written, it talks about construction vehicles on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, in order to create that consistency. And again, I'll get the board's opinion on this, but I'm willing to eliminate the Saturday restriction. So it would just be Sundays and federal holidays. And then both projects are the same.
John, is it Saturday would be the same timing you had?
Yes, yes, everything else.
Not till the eight o'clock?
Everything stays the same.
Good.
That, that would be good, thank you.
So any questions on these little tweaks that we're making here?
I'm good, thank you. I had a couple of tweaks.
Okay.
So just on specific condition number two, where I said it's good for a period of two years from the date of this resolution, I put, i.e. August sixth of twenty twenty-four, meaning the date of this resolution, and I will put to August sixth of twenty twenty-six, so it's clear. I put in within sixty days at the end, or at the end of the two-year period to take it down. But again, when they check in with the board in two years, see where they are, they may know more that it may take thirty days or it may take ninety days, and you can revise it then. I will change six A to say nine, between nine AM and three PM Monday through Saturday, and will omit Saturday from the following sentence. It did have for the first sentence, clearing and erosion control, that actually should be from construction activity.
You said Monday to Saturday, you said until three.
Nine to three.
Monday, you said Monday to Saturday.
Monday through Saturday from nine to three.
Yeah, there's nothing on Sunday or.
No, no, but three o'clock, Monday to Fridays, three o'clock as well.
Yeah, I think the other one was five.
Monday to Friday should be later.
The actual, the actual construction activities, not the entrance.
Right.
Was terminated at five o'clock on Saturdays. The usage of the roads would be nine to three.
Yes, that's what the other section says.
Yes, uses for construction vehicles, nine to three, five, five trucks per hour.
And you already have construction activities, isn't it?
Yeah, I had, I originally had clearing and erosion control, which is fast construction. And then I said, this shall be permitted through August sixth to twenty twenty-six and shall be revisited by the Tuxedo Planning Board in July of twenty twenty-six. And that was the only other change. But I did want to draw the board's attention to page three, where I highlighted on, on August sixth, twenty twenty-four, in accordance with Town Code, Section ninety-eight fifty-five D nine, the planning board determined that no public hearing was necessary and reaffirmed its secret findings statement, no additional calls to the Orange County Planning Department for general municipal laws, Section two thirty-nine L and M was required. So if you adopt the resolution as changed, you will also be adopted next.
So we don't need separate resolutions?
You don't need separate resolutions for that, but.
Or motions.
Or motions. Just wanted to point it out. Usually I require ones, but since I pointed it out, as long as you adopt the resolution, wherever that it's in there, we're good.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve a resolution with the changes that we've discussed. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it very much. Thank you, Board.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I'm going to miss seeing you guys.
Yeah, really.
We can come back if you want.
Okay, next issue is Skyview Skylight, an extension of the site plan. And is this also for the extension of the special permit? And is this also for the extension of a special permit?
Um, I only wrote down.
Special permit doesn't expire. That's eighteen months from when we approved it. My calculation says that that's good until February of next year. So it's no sense in doing that one. This, this would restart the clock.
When we get closer, the next one is in February, so then we'll vault them together. But right now, this one is shorter than that.
So this is just an extension of the site plan approval?
And for six months, that would bring it to your February fourth, twenty-twenty.
Uh, Norman, why don't you just give us a brief update of how you're doing?
Can you use the microphone?
Thank you.
So since the last time we were here, we got some approvals and we got the idea from the board that we can go ahead. So we, we put to work, the architects and the engineers and the drone got up. So hopefully by the end of this month, we'll have some plans, uh, able to view again with all the updates and hopefully you guys can sign it and you can start working. This will be up to, uh, Broker is almost finished. They did another perk test for other questions. And David Collins is the architect. He's almost finished on it. And then I have an MVP, BD company, somebody, and he's also almost finished. So everything is coming into place. So we have some to show.
Are the renderings of the architecture different than what we've already approved?
No, I think it's working on the same, on the same principles, same concept, nothing changed. And that's the hard work to fit everything against.
And you realize that at any time you can do demolition?
Yes, uh, but you want to use the same people who work over there doing the other work to do the same demolition as well. So they don't just one with demolition, one company, that's what they're all, want to stop working and keep them working.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this?
No, just take the buildings down already. Just take the buildings down.
Nobody wants to do half the job. Everyone wants to come in and do the whole job.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one thing just towards information? So my recollection, and I haven't reviewed the resolution since you, uh, approved it, but I think the applicant has conditional approval. And that means that unless there was a condition that required them to come back, I don't think there's any reason for them to come back with revised plans. So, uh, as, as you typically would, the applicant would submit plans to the consultants. Um, and we would write letters to you to indicate whether they'd comply with the conditions or not. Once all the conditions are complied, then the chairman signs the plans.
We're almost there, so we'll be able to show you, I think, by the end of this month. We have all the, the main plans, the site plans finished with all the updates. And we should be ready to sign and start working on the site. And then further down the road, we have the, the architect's plans almost finished as well, working very fast. Not complicated buildings, a very simple building, so. Yeah, it's gonna be very nice on the outside, but inside is, uh, gonna be pretty much empty.
Right.
So that's all we have to.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Somebody has any questions on this one? Valerie or Sean or Kelly have any? So I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, draft, uh, extension.
The extension till February fourth of twenty-twenty-five.
And we can't do more than six months, right?
I, I think for this time to tie it together with the special permit, so they're on the same track.
Right. Okay. So it's a six-month extension to February of next year. Do our best. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
He was the second.
I second that one.
Go ahead.
Let's see.
Leave it the way it is.
What unless?
Okay, Norman, thank you.
Thanks, good night.
Okay. The next one is an amended site plan for the historical. This was the problem that I alluded to before about the meadow. The other issue that, uh, we had, um, the plans we approved showed a wooden bench, uh, between the building and Route seventeen, um, that was never installed. And while a CO was issued, uh, by the Temporary Building Inspector at the time. Quite a few months ago, right, Deborah?
Yes.
Uh, that was, uh, issued by mistake. And, um, so what we're gonna do tonight is approve a amended site plan without the bench, but allow the Historical Society, when they have funding, and it's a funding issue now for the beds, uh, they can install the beds at any time in the future. We're, we're giving them that permission. They don't have to to get a new CO. If the building inspectors are determined.
It's like a phase two for their project.
The issue with the meadow, I don't know if any of you saw it.
It was a mess.
It, it was unsightly.
It looked like the lawnmower broke.
So, um, again, we had a lot of complaints. We talked to Betty from, uh, the Historical Society. Uh, she agreed to mow it, so it looks pretty good now.
Yeah.
Uh, and hopefully they'll continue to maintain it. Uh, I don't know about the meadow, how that's gonna evolve or develop, as they call it. The building inspector will have to keep an eye on it.
Which is, I think that's an odd place for me.
Seems like a romantic notion.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's. Sparking me back to like the old historical days or something. But that's why I see the difference between what the watchtower was gonna do up on their hill or on their grades is, to me, is different than what the proposal for something that looks kind of unsightly on our corridor that we're trying to improve.
So, um, there are only two specific conditions, uh, nothing more than what I've already said, right, Kelly?
Nope, just noting as well that you determined no public hearing is necessary and that the amended application is a type-two action requiring no further review and no additional referral to Orange County Planning Department was required.
And also, um, in addition to the beds, there were two trees that were on the original landscape plan. Uh, they're not there either, but whenever they can put those in. And we're giving them permission, but not a requirement to really ever do it.
Right. As they said, they, you know, they wanted to, but right now the funding isn't there, so.
So, uh, I'll make a motion, any, Valerie or Sean, you have anything else on this?
No.
Anybody have any comments on this? So I'll make a motion to approve the amended site plan resolution. Second?
Aye.
I'm staying.
Cause you were involved.
I, I was on the, the board of, uh, directors.
Okay, the final item is, uh, a referral to the town board of a new local law that Kelly has drafted. And this relates to the old Gulf Station, which will be a BP station. The issue there is that the, uh, the canopy is backlit. The top of the canopy is backlit, it's green. You've probably seen them on Route seventeen, uh, the typical BP station. And, uh, the town board has to pass a new law to allow that. And this is a one-and-done thing because it's written, uh, because, uh, based on the fact that it was an existing gas station. Will be a gas station, but there are no new gas stations allowed in Tuxedo going forward. So this will not be needed again.
Unless you have another existing gas station, they would be able to utilize this as well.
Like Valero.
With Valero, yeah.
That was, yeah, kind of one down.
Right.
So it's just simply that we agree with this and.
If the board agrees, if you have any further comments on it, uh, the revision just talks about, it makes one correction that there was a typo actually in your code where there's missing the word "not". So, uh, so it's supposed to say in any commercial district, any sign not more than three square feet in area with a maximum height of not more than three feet above grade. That was one thing. But instead it said of more than three square feet, only this high. And then the, the part that really came up, that was fixed just because you were in the same section. Why not fix the typo? And then this one was to permit the internally illuminated sign for pre-existing gas stations.
Is he gonna need our, our, some on, on this?
I think he is gonna proceed with, so he was allotted a certain size for the canopy. My understanding is he does want a larger canopy, so he would have to go to ZBA to get that and then probably come back to you for an amended site plan. But we're gonna follow it up with him and.
Yeah, we, we threw out to him, but one isn't, he just used a smaller canopy and not have to go through ZBA and maybe us again. But it appears he doesn't want to do that for whatever reason. So it's obviously his choice.
It might be a BP thing, sometimes they, they get really possessive about their trademark.
How does he want a larger sign? You mean in elevation?
No, a larger canopy.
More coverage on the.
Canopy.
This is a wider.
Yeah, so.
A larger area.
It covers a larger.
He wants it so that.
That's pretty standard in the range.
The canopy issue, the site plan was ninety-six by twenty. The canopy that he's looking at right now is one oh four by twenty-six. Where that fits, I don't know.
Is that a standard size for BP?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
I would think they standardize.
Yeah, I would think it's.
Based on a number of pumps.
The pumps, right? Angle and everything where cars.
Some places are different. So if you, you know, you go to Ford, Ford all has to look the same if you're buying a car. So I'm wondering if maybe it's, he went with BP and BP all has.
Maybe a standard design.
Yeah, that might be. But I'm sure he'll.
I wonder how a larger canopy would affect the street widening project that we are.
It'll be a covered area.
It would all be located on his property, so.
Yeah, that will.
It wouldn't impact the.
Yeah, he can't have it protruding out.
It doesn't protrude.
Okay.
I just. So we need a motion on this?
Um, if the board has no comments, then if you want to authorize me to draft a report to the town board that you find the local law suspect for you, I can use.
Anybody have any questions on this?
No.
So we agree to authorize Kelly to persteal this?
Agreed.
Yes.
One final thing we didn't.
So is that a motion by John and a second by Susan? Is that what I heard?
That sounds good.
That's exactly what you heard.
One final thing we didn't approve minutes yet from my last meeting. We're kind of doing things in reverse here.
I'll second that.
Any, uh, any questions on this?
Nope.
On my favor?
Aye.
All right, we got that. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
My favor?
Aye.
Okay.